Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the National Board of Education's Human Resources Committee at the Nashua High School Boardroom. It is the 18th of November, 2024, and we are starting at 5:42. And Ms. Raymond will call the attendance or order.
Okay. Ms. Delio?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is here. Ms. Darling is not here. We also have Ms. Lampier. Nobody else from the board is in this circle. We have Dr. Andre, Mr. Bous, and Ms. DeGray.
Okay. Should we start with the HR update then, Mr. Bous?
Yep, absolutely. So I am waiting for the computer to load so I can pull up the statistics of the exit interview survey, so I'll hold off on that for the time being. But going through the HR data of our job openings, we currently have 139 openings. That's total. For teachers, we have 25. If you break it down, elementary, middle, and high school, we have 14 at the elementary school. Middle school has seven openings and the high school has four. The school psychologists, we're looking for about five school psychologists at the moment. Speech pathologists, we are looking for two of them. All of those positions fall under the teacher's contract. For paras, based off the beginning of the year projections of each class being fully enrolled, we're short that 70. If you break it down, there's 14 instructional and 56 district-wide. But again, those are based off of our beginning-of-the-year projections, and that's based off of every class being fully enrolled. So we are currently working with special ed and the principals right now to kind of figure out what our true number is that we're missing. So that number is a little bit skewed. On top of that, we do have 18 agency workers in those buildings that are kind of covering those 56 district-wide paras. So if you want to look at it that way, we have about 38 district-wide paras that we're looking for. Again, based off of beginning-of-the-year projections. Food service, we have 19 positions opening. For plan ops, we have 15. If you break it down, there's three custodians. We're looking for an alarm technician, an HVAC mechanic, and 10 crossing guards. Administratively, we still have three openings. We're still in search for the assistant superintendent of elementary, the civil rights coordinator, where we're trying to, you know, find different avenues for that position, and then the AP at Amherst Street. And then I'm happy to announce that we are fully staffed in the clerical units. So all of our clerical employees are hired. So that's just an idea of the breakdown.
Ms. Raymond?
I always have a bunch of questions. The Amherst Street assistant principal, that's that position where we hired, but we're backfilling, correct? Okay. So that's...
Okay, right.
That's good.
So yes, we have a candidate for that. We're just waiting for them to be certified.
Great. And then my other question is about the number of vacancies that we have in teaching. Do we have classes that aren't happening or students? I remember during COVID, sometimes students would sit in the cafeteria or in this room, you know, because they didn't have a teacher. Are we having that experience with some of these openings? Or are all the kids having a teacher in front of them all the time?
At the moment, all the kids have a teacher in front of them. For the vacancies, we are doing, the teachers are giving up either their prep period or not to cover that. So we are covering those vacancies with that, with the teachers that we currently have.
Okay. What about the elementary? Are they being covered by long-term subs or classes being merged or some other arrangement?
Yep, exactly. So it's either a long-term sub, a long-term sub will be in there to cover, or depending on class sizes, the classes will be split in between the two or three other teachers that they have there.
And I remember a couple of years ago, we were really struggling with having enough substitutes to cover when we had teacher openings. Are we still having that challenge or has using the contract agency got, made it better? Dr. Andre is giving me a look like, no.
No, there's still not enough sub coverage with either through the agency or any other aspect. Fill rate is, I think we looked at the fill rate's around 55%.
That's not great. Are we having any concerns about safety or supervision with our current numbers?
I think the building principals have been doing a good job of making things work. As Mr. Bous said, we have, through different MOUs and contract language, we have teachers covering a lot of classes. Years ago, we used to have huge study halls at the high school. That's not happening anymore. But, you know, there's always the need of having more people in. It's just also stressful if you're giving up your prep period every day. You know, it's just exhausting to cover a class. So I don't think it's, kids are missing, not that they're, it's, it's better to have their teacher in front of them every day. I don't want to say it's not a safety issue or an instructional issue. It's, it would be great to have full staffing on a daily basis.
Right. I mean, I want our kids to have, you know, the best educational opportunities possible and to have, you know, high-quality instruction, which I have every confidence in our current staff is doing. But I also don't want our current staff to burn out while delivering these extra classes. So, all right. Any other thoughts on, it's not really teacher recruitment time, right? It's November. Are we kind of stuck until...
I mean, it is, it's changed over time. Quite honestly, I mean, last month, we were having comments on, we had experienced educators transferring to different districts. We're getting some in. So the years of, you know, you have to wait to a certain part of the year to start recruiting people in. You know, actually, you talked about the assistant principal. We already have, we'll have a recommendation backfill in her position. So people are moving much more frequently now than years and years ago, whatever the reason that they're leaving one district to come to this district. Well, we're hoping they come in here because we're the best district, so.
Mr. Bous, are you ready or not yet for that? Because we can move on with other items on the agenda first.
Just about getting it. I just want to make sure. Yep, I got it up.
So Mr. Bous is going to present us information from a survey that was taken of people who have left our school district so that we can get the reasons why they're not staying with us, and maybe that will help us all going forward with negotiating new contracts and everything else. So thank you, Mr. Bous. We all appreciate this.
Yeah, no problem. So if you want to turn your attention to the big screen, just kind of a quick overview, these are the job titles of the 26 responses. Do keep in mind, this went out to over 100 people. We only got 26 responses back. These are just the kind of positions that we have received responses from. So it looks like there's some TIA's in there, a couple custodians, some NASIS employees, a couple paras, some secretaries, a couple teachers in there. So a little, little mix of everybody, kind of putting their two cents into, you know, helping improve the district is the way I look at these. So that just kind of goes over who their supervisor is very statically. A lot of people just have the one. So length of employment, kind of, I want to kind of pull that up because that's a big piece that I kind of see. A lot of the turnover is within the zero to five years. So the two pieces of the pie, the 34.6 and the 26.9 are the zero to five years, this being two to five years. The smaller of the two big pieces is the zero to one years, and we're looking to kind of improve that. The other big piece is the six to 10. We don't see the, the longer tenured employees tend to leave when they leave, they're retiring is typically what that is. Scrolling down, you can see the contract that they're affiliated with. Again, they're kind of all over the place, but the big one on here is the teachers. So it looks like more teachers out of everybody that filled it out. Paras on their second. There, this piece of the pie right up here. Work location, again, it's kind of skewed because not everybody answers it, but it just kind of goes over a quick view of the schools that the employees are leaving. Again, it's skewed because it could be one person at that school and it shows 15%. So I do want to just reiterate that. Then as you can see, nobody that retires fills out this form. It's just the resignations, 100% right down the house. What prompted the job search is another big one, is kind of, for me, is the reason why you left. So the biggest piece in the pie right there is career advancement, which, I mean, kind of, it depends, I guess, how you look at it from a school district perspective. I mean, when you sign up to be a teacher, the only way up is to be a principal or assistant principal, and if you don't want to do that, then there's really not much career advancement. I mean, you could be a peer coach, but I would say that they're still level to their peers, so it's not much of a promotion per se. So career advancement, I think, is just kind of an education. What's the word I'm looking for? An education, kind of, like roadblock, really. It's really, there's really, you know, depending on what you signed up for in that education, there's really only so far you can go, unless you want to go all the way to the top to Dr. Andre's position. Some of the other big pieces of the pie right here, we can see is the type of work performed in some of the comments that we had on there. The job might not have been as advertised as the position actually entailed. So one of them, I kind of dug into it, there was a TIA position. The position was more, when they went into it, was more of a para educator position. So they kind of left because they were thinking it was more of a teaching position as opposed to a para position. Others is the benefit offerings, which it's kind of, once we go into the later graphs, you'll probably kind of laugh, but it's really around the paras with this one is the benefit offerings, is because typically what we find is when the paras do have our benefits, it almost eats up all of their cost of their paycheck. So that's kind of why they put down the benefit offerings where, yeah, we do offer great benefits, but it's at a large cost, and if you're not making that much, it kind of, you contemplate whether you want the benefits or you want the take-home money. And then all the other ones are kind of one-time answers. So you have, you know, staying home with the child to, another big piece was compensation. Relocation, I mean, things like that we don't really have control over for the relocation piece. But a lot of the other ones are one answers, you know, the culture, supervision, department closing at a previous school that had to do with McCarth, Elm Street closing, lack of flexibility, better work, life balance. And then those are kind of, just like I said, the onesie, twosies in there. But the big one, like I said, was the career advancement. If you go to the graphs at the bottom, the compensation, you can kind of see we're kind of in the middle of the road there, more leaning towards the high side, but it's really middle of the road. Everybody's kind of, I would say, based off of your position is where you're going to agree or disagree in this one. But it looks like a lot of them, eight of them to be exact, are right in the middle. So it seems like they're fairly compensated based off of this. Again, I guess it really depends on the group that you ask. Health insurance, you can see is rated very high. All of the insurances, as we go through, you can see are rated very high. Retirement savings, again, rated very high. Yep.
So on the benefits, are all of these through the city? Like, do the school employees have the same health insurance and dental and vision and all that stuff as the city?
The same plans, yep.
Same plans, okay. And then retirements, is that the same as the state retirement or is it a different one for teachers?
The retirement would be the New Hampshire retirement, the state, yep.
Great.
I think to tie into it, it also goes over like our payouts and everything for the teachers for retirements, because there's a higher payout for retiring. Continuing down, kind of just to add to the benefits for sick bank and life insurance, it's rated very high in our district. Paid leave doesn't seem to be an issue regarding vacation, personal, and sick time. Tuition reimbursement, I take it as a, we're doing very well in the tuition professional development reimbursement. 12, or I guess if you want to combine it, 14 out of the 26 responses rated us either very high or high. So I can, I would take that as, we're really doing everything we can to try to reimburse for furthering your education, which in an education, that's, goes a long way. Career advancement, I would say we're middle of the pack. Towards the other end, like I mentioned, that was one of the bigger pieces of the pie for reasons why people were leaving. Again, it's kind of just education. It's really, you know, where you want to take the education. If you just want to be a teacher, then there's obviously not much, you know, growth for you to do if you don't want to take that next step. So I can see that as well. And then if they're, if you're not taking that next step, you're just getting your yearly increases, which is tend, tend to be why you see that, those people leaving for that aspect. In other aspects, I mean, there's only so high you can go from the central admin team. So whether you're on the central admin team, there's only so many positions until you hit the director, and then the director, there's, there's not much above that, so.
Ms. Raymond?
I find this, I don't know, I guess that one kind of surprises me, given the size of our district, since we have 12 elementary schools, three middle, two high schools, and the preschool. I feel like that's a lot of assistant principal and principal positions compared to other places in the state, so.
It's true, but like, two years ago, we had, I think we hired six elementary assistant principals. And this year, we had, I think, one opening.
Oh, that makes sense, so it's cyclical.
So it depends on the ebb and flow, and we want to retain our administrators. So, and a lot of our building principals have, was it, three years ago, I think we hired four, I think.
That's rare for us to hire a principal. You're right. I wasn't thinking about it that way.
Yeah, so our retention is, is good.
Yeah, so you could, you could take this slide as a positive as well on that aspect where our administrators aren't leaving, so there's no room for them to go, which is a benefit, because, you know, you're not having to, you know, change the culture of the school if a new administrator comes in and things like that. So that's kind of how I would turn the positive spin on that.
I appreciate you bringing the, this, the information to the board. I think it's interesting.
Yeah, totally.
And then work-life balance, it's sort of towards the middle to the upper tier for work-life balance. I mean, a school district, kind of goes without saying with the work-life balance. I want to keep it that way. Want to make sure we don't overwork anybody that feels that they're overworked. And then the flexibility piece is basically just like the Verizon Bar Tower, kind of all over the place there, more heavily in the, that we are flexible and flexibility regarding, you know, just about everything, I would say. So whether it's, you know, start times at your school or start times in district office or, you know, can they leave because they have to go pick up their children? Being accommodating is kind of the flexibility piece that we were looking at for this question. It's good, I'm glad that we do see it kind of on the up, towards the fives and fours more in that aspect, because that means, you know, we are trying to provide and do what's best for our employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bous. This is really enlightening. It's a shame that we don't have more respondents, but I don't, can't think of any way we can incentivize them after they've left us to tell us why they left, so.
We are trying to catch them a little bit earlier, so if they do give, the very few that do give two-week notices, I try to get it out right away so that, you know, they're not getting it on the last day so that they, you know, by then, they're already checked out. I try to encourage them, you know, hey, we really love your feedback and how we can improve the district, but as far as that, I mean, I can only do so much to get them to actually fill out the form. There were two questions in the bottom of this. The first question being, is there anything the Nashua School District could have done to maintain your employment? Some of the highlights of those, that question would be, for paras more specifically, is to pay more, better cost of health insurances specifically for paras, set clear expectations upfront upon hire, and increase the communication between departments. And then the other question in there that we asked was, is there anything you feel that is important for us to know or be aware of? Some of the highlights in that were more support in the classrooms, more work being pushed to the newer teachers, class sizes increased, which we all knew about, and then more time for teachers to work and plan together. And that is the breakdown and highlights of the exit interview for the 23-24 school year. So this was all based off of last school year.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Then looking at today's agenda, we, we've all had a chance to read the transportation coordinator job description. If anyone is willing to make a motion that we approve it, that would be great, or if you have questions first, we'll entertain those. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you.
I don't know why I called on you automatically.
I know. I just, can you highlight what's different from the last time we hosted this job six months ago?
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to.
That may be...
So I think just taking a step back, kind of looking at everything that we've transpired over the last 13 weeks, right, as a district related to transportation, we really have honed in on a transportation coordinator. So we need somebody that can think strategically about how can we optimize, of course, the routes? How can we be more transparent? How can the communication be revamped? And hopefully, ideally, somebody with Tyler technology experience would be a huge plus. So we, as a district or as an internal team, you know, I don't necessarily think we need a director-level person in this position, but we really need somebody that can roll up their sleeves, kind of dig in, figure out, you know, where are some of the inconsistencies and do the partnership with the charter schools, with the first student, most importantly, and our families. So hopefully, we don't ever experience what we have again in the future.
Yes, I agree with that. I did see that it's a coordinator instead of a director, and I'm hoping that that will make a positive change in the people who are applying.
Any more questions?
No, I'll make the motion to approve the transportation coordinator job description.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. Okay. Next, we're moving on to the personnel recommendations tonight. We have a leave of absence, three nominations to hire new people, and two resignations. If you have any questions on those, we would have to go into a private session, but I think that they look fine the way they are. If I'm looking for a motion to accept them.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Accept. I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. And then the administrative recommendation for tonight is a recommendation to elect Cameron Dion. Did I pronounce that right? Okay, thank you. To the position of webmaster, social media coordinator, at an annual salary of $76,513. And would we like to have him come up and tell us a little bit about himself?
Yep. So Cam, if you can give a little bit of your background, why you applied for this position and what brought you to Nashua?
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be in front, here in front of you all today. My name's Cameron Dion. I originally applied for the position, looking at it from a standpoint of working for webmaster, social media, graphic design positions for the last nine or so years, on and off. Having worked at Pinkerton Academy in a school district, I thought this would be a fantastic way for me to move towards something that I've been really passionate about. Growing up in Nashua my whole life, I wanted to kind of come back, having worked in Nashua for a lot of nonprofits, giving back to the community. It's something that I really enjoy doing. I'm, kind of like what I was saying, a professional graphic and motion designer. I dabble in web UI/UX design, responsive web development and design, anything that kind of lands in that field, I enjoy doing, and I'm really looking forward to bringing that to the Nashua School District.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question for Cam? Ms. Raymond?
I guess I'll go first. I know Mr. Johnson has questions as well.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, so this is not my wheelhouse, but I'm really, really excited that a Nashua native is coming back to Nashua to work here. I just, I think that is so cool, and so I'm really excited about it. My question is about your vision or your plan on how we can get the word out to people about the great things that are happening in Nashua? Because I feel like social media can sometimes be a really negative place, and we miss highlighting a lot of the really great, fun, and exciting educational things that our kids are experiencing.
And that's a very fantastic point. With the social media, it's, there's a lot of negativity brewing around, but I believe that with all the things going on in Nashua schools between the CTE departments and culinary and any of those things, posting those things and showing parents that their students are being involved in something special and something that they can put their passions and pursuits to, putting that forward instead of negativity, which you see brew along, brew around a lot of social media pages is important. Bringing parents in the loop, I'd like to be more of like a liaison between the inside and the outside, bridging that gap and showing a lot of transparency that we want parents and their guardians to be comfortable sending students to school and knowing that they're getting a proper education and seeing the things that they can do and being excited to go to school instead of necessarily kind of being afraid that some students might be and having a positive impact.
Great.
If I can just, we had a great conversation, and Cameron asked, like, what's a typical day? And I said, well, you're going to be our chief storyteller, this is not a typical day. And he just lit up on, like, I can go out there and find positive stories, investigate, and really, he had a great answer during our conversations and about his freedom and independence on really being that chief storyteller and going out there. And he was just like, this is what I, you know, I want to do. And then he just has the amount of skills and resources that he shared with us was really impressive.
Mr. Johnson, did you have some questions?
I know, more comments was, I was in on the interview process, and we had some great candidates, but Cam definitely stood out. As a designer, it's always good to hear someone speaking about their experience and knowing that they're, they're speaking from a good place, because, you know, I know the field, so they, they know the field. That was a very positive interaction. So I feel very good about him coming in and being storyteller. I used to work on the Facebook page for New Searls when I was on the PTO there. So definitely one of the things I want to see is those PTOs sort of pulled in and given sort of a track to follow when they're telling the stories about their schools that, you know, we can have across the entire school system.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Just to kind of piggyback on that, I think that the social media experience as a parent is very different from school to school right now in our district, and I would love to see some consistency there. Like, I have kids here at North, and it's a North employee who runs it, and it is just, like, if you have a question about North, if you post it on the North Parents Group, the woman who does it knows the answer, and she gets you the answer in a professional and quick way, and she's always posting stuff about job fairs and upcoming events, and it's like the go-to place as a parent, that I actually go to that before I go to the website. And so that was not the experience I've had at some of the other schools my kids have gone to. And so I would just love to, to make sure that we have some consistency, but that we're also not running into issues where we have compromises in student privacy and student safety. And so I'm really excited to have somebody kind of in charge of all of that. So, yay.
Yeah, it's definitely something that can, you know, the understanding to be able to then tell the parent groups, okay, this is what you got to look out for, this is what you should and shouldn't do, that's going to benefit us tremendously.
Any other comments or questions? Yep. Oh, yes, Ms. Lampier.
I was just wondering if, if, I know we talked about redesigning our website. I didn't know if that was something that was going to be done all at once or it was kind of, kind of an ongoing project.
That's on his to-do list as well.
Are you, are you envisioning us to start seeing changes soon or you think maybe further down the road?
So we're actually, we had an RFP out, and so we'll review the bids for the, the website and start working with the company that is awarded, and then we'll start making the changes from there. So he'll help us in the decision-making.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I do.
I made the motion, right?
So the, I don't know if you made the motion or not. You want to read it again? I'll just write your name.
Motion to, recommendation to elect Cameron Dion to the position of webmaster, social media coordinator at an annual salary of $76,513.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. We're glad to have you here. Thank you. If we have nothing else.
I do want to add one thing. We do, sorry. It's not on the recommendations, but we did hire a district accountant, and they are here today. Wasn't sure if you wanted to.
Oh, sure. We always love to hear from new people.
Absolutely. So we'll bring up our district accountant, Amanda Nelson.
We do not need to move on that tonight, though. It's all settled, right?
Yeah.
So do we need a motion for that?
To just talk to her? I don't think so.
Or do we make the motion last time?
Last time, we, it was approved to go out, and then, so we've hired in since our last meeting, and since it's not a coordinator. So it should be on the list tonight so that we can accept the recommendation. So if we can have a recommendation, I would appreciate it.
I don't have the exact wording or the salary amount. Someone else able to make that recommendation or give us the information?
Yep, it's $80,000.
Okay. I can make the motion if you want.
Okay.
So I move that we elect Amanda Nelson to the position of district accountant at an annual salary of $80,000, beginning, today? Beginning today?
Immediately.
Okay. Oh, and I don't think we said what day Mr. Dion begins either.
December 7th.
Beginning December 7th, okay. I'm just going to add that. Okay. 12, 7. All right, so I've made the motion to elect Ms. Nelson.
Second.
All those in favor?
We should ask your questions first.
All right, yes. So I'll do just the quick introduction, I guess. So Amanda, if you wouldn't mind, just giving us a brief background in why you decided to take the district accountant position.
Sure. So I, my name's Amanda Nelson. I lived in Nashua for the past five years. I have been accounting and finance for the past 13 years, both profit and nonprofit. My most recent position was doing budgeting, forecasting, accounting for a medical practice. I applied for this position because I saw it was for the Nashua School District. I have an eight-year-old son that goes to Amherst Street Elementary, and to have the opportunity to work for that school district, I just felt like that's where my heart was. So, yeah.
That's wonderful. Any questions?
I don't know enough about accounting to ask intelligent questions about accounting.
I could ask all the questions about design and whatever.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, so if we don't have any questions, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. It's an honor.
Thank you. Okay. I'm lucky I can pay my bills. Anyway, if there is nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. We're already cutting into the time of the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at 6:14.